Okay, good evening everyone. Let's hang on, okay. Calling the meeting officially to order. Welcome to our Flat City Council meeting here on Tuesday, August 5th, 2025 at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers. We will begin calling the meeting order, begin by a revocation by Pastor John Stone from the North Flapping Church. Pastor Stone, please.
I have a scripture that I want to read and then I just want to pray over y'all. But the first thing I did want to say before I do that, I just want to say thanks for the effort that you guys give, that you women give all the time. We're grateful. So here we go. St. James, Chapter 1, starting verse 5. If any of you lacks wisdom, let him ask God, who gives generously and to all without reproach, and it will be given to him. But let him ask in faith and with no doubting, for the one who doubts is like a wave of the sea, driven and tossed by the wind. That person must not suppose he will receive anything from the Lord. He's a double-minded man, unstable in all his ways. So I'm going to pray for wisdom. Would you pray with me? Father, we know that we lack wisdom. There's so many times where it's like we think we see the right way and we don't. And so we need your wisdom. And we pray your wisdom to the city council tonight. We pray that they will be led, Lord, not just by their own thoughts, but by yours. Lord, we thank you for the effort that they give. We pray that you would return to them in inefficiency and seeming extra time, Lord, the things that they serve our city with. Lord, give them a sense of love for the community and for one another. Lord, we need these things and you're the one who can give them. So that's what we ask in the name of Jesus. Amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Angie, the roll call, please.
Here. 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 Here.
Thank you, Open Meetings Act. A current copy of the Open Meetings Act of the state of Nebraska is posted on the wall at the back of the council chambers, roughly above Donna's head back there. Meeting procedure. The public may address specific agenda items of pleasure of the mayor. If recognized by the mayor, please identify yourself by stating your name and address. Please address the council through the mayor and limit your remarks. We respect our city employees and request that any complaints or criticisms of employees not be aired in a public meeting. Concerns about employees should be brought to the attention of the city administrator or the mayor. Indivisible violation will be declared out of order. Tonight, we begin with an award, accolade, and presentation, and our presentation is from... Sons of the American Revolution are here to present an American flag and certificate to the city. If you'll hold on right there, Mr. Hulse, I'll come up in just a moment. This flag has flown over the U.S. Capitol Building in Washington, DC, and will now be flown in North Platte Cemetery to honor military service veterans and first responders. And we have Mr. Hulse, and I'm sorry, I don't know the other gentleman. Ron Roberts, from the Sons of the American Revolution, here to present. If you guys would like to say something, please come over to the microphone.
I think you've covered everything we have. We do have certificates. I will mention that we provided a light for the pole over there, and we will maintain this. So when it's worn, we'll get you another one, exactly the same, and hang that. So that will be a permanent job of ours. Here's our certificate. Here's the flag. If you want to give that to Lyle, he'll get that over to the cemetery, and we'll get this thing going. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Consent agenda. All matters under the consent agenda are considered by the city council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. Any city council member may, however, remove an item from consent by request. It might just be my allergies, but can you guys hear me in the back? Okay. Okay. My ears are plugged up a little bit or something. Sorry. Okay. Continuing. We have kind of a long consent agenda, so I'm going to read for a little while. Prepare yourselves accordingly. Number 1. A, approve the minutes of July 15, 2025. B, place on file Treasures Report for June 2025. Let's see. C, approve the application by Creativity Unlimited Arts Council, DBA Prairie Arts Center, for a special designated license on August 9, 2025, from 12:00 PM to 5:00 PM in the parking lot west of the Prairie Arts Center, 416 North Jeffers Street, for an art affair paint competition. D, approve the application by Natabour Valley Vineyards LLC for a special designated license on November 1, 2025, from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and November 2, 2025, from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, at the DNN Event Center, 501 East Walker Road, for the Cowboy Christmas Craft Show. E, approve the application by Fraternal Order of Eagles, number 2839, for a special designated license on September 5, 2025, from 1:00 PM to 11:00 PM, at 620 North Chestnut Street, excuse me, for the Cody Cruisers Car Show. Need some of your water. Kidding, I wouldn't do that. Sorry, everybody. What else do you have down there? F, send the application of Pronto Fuel LLC for a Class D liquor license, beer, wine, spirits, off-sale only, for their location at 1020 North Jeffers Street, to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission, with no recommendation. G, send the application of the Minnow Bucket for Class C liquor license, beer, wine, distilled spirits, on and off sale, for their location at 1013 South Jeffers Street, to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission, with no recommendation. H, send the application of Hampton by Hilton for a Class C liquor license, beer, wine, distilled spirits, on and off sale, for their location at 200 Platte Oasis Parkway, to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission, with no recommendation. I, adopt the resolution for signing of the Municipal Annual Certification of Program Compliance 2025, and authorize the mayor to sign the Municipal Annual Certification of Program Compliance to Nebraska Board of Public Roads, Classifications and Standards 2025. J, adopt the recommendation by the City Planning Commission for preliminary and final approval of Mulligan Meadows 4th Subdivision located on West 15th Street in a PR3 dwelling district. K, approve the National Functional Classification System map and authorize the mayor to sign and submit the map to the Nebraska Department of Transportation. L, authorize the mayor to sign the covenant agreements for 1208 West 11th Street, 1621 West 13th Street, 815 South Griffin, and 504 to 506 North Bryan Avenue, between the Nebraska Department of Economic Development and the City of North Platte.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented, with the exception of item L.
Second. Motion by Reeker, second by Vols, accepting item L. Calling the question on all items except L. All items except L on the consent agenda are passed. Reeker, what's your concern?
No concerns, just wanted to vote on it separately, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, okay. We would need a motion then.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we vote on item L, to authorize the mayor to sign the covenant agreements for 1208 West 11th Street, 1621 West 13th Street, 815 South Griffin, and 504, 506 North Bryan Avenue, between Nebraska Department of Economic Development and the City of North Platte.
Second.
Motion by Reeker, second by Nisley. Discussion on item L. Seeing none, calling the question on item L, please. Item L is passed. Thank you, everyone. Regular agenda. Authorize city administration to draft an agreement with the North Platte Regional Airport Authority, provide prorated monthly advances for their annual property tax request.
Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize city administration to draft an agreement with the North Platte Regional Airport Authority to provide prorated monthly advances of their annual property tax request to the authority, based on the following major terms, an annual interest rate of 3%.
Second.
Motion by Lucas, second by... I'm going to give Rod that one. I think he won, so, okay. Discussion on item number 2. Lane, do you have some thoughts here?
We discussed this item a little bit last meeting. It was basically to help the airport maintain their budget and save the taxpayer some money because the tax receipts come in kind of inconsistently month to month, and this will help them to better have more consistent revenue month to month and then pay us back. And so it just helps them, you know, save some money on the long haul as far as some interest rates and things. I'm having a line of credit.
Go ahead, thank. I went ahead with the motion there, but I wasn't 100% sure if we're collecting the money and then divvying out to them, then I really don't feel like we should charge them any interest. If we're fronting the money and working through the legalities of how you do that, and kind of loaning it to them, and then they're paying us back, my thought was we would just recoup maybe what you would get in a money market account or something of that nature. So I don't have firm feelings about the terms on that. I was just trying to get this on the table for discussion, but I don't know if I fully understand if it's the way we push out monies received or whether we're loaning money.
So the goal is to provide sort of a stable flux of revenue to the airport so that they're not having to go into a credit account and then pay that interest rate, and that's where the potential tax savings to the taxpayer would come from. However, it would take the legal form of a transfer of funds and a fee associated potentially with that transfer if the council is so approving, but that would be up to the council to decide. And then the transfer in reverse to make the city whole would occur periodically through the year as the revenue comes into the airport authority because it does not come to the city first.
We are killing her. As the motion was presented, it said 3%. Is that 3% for every transaction, or is this like the loan situation that I talked about?
It'd be an amortization schedule of the 3%. And to Ty's point, when we look at our CDs and our interest-bearing accounts, we're around 2.9% to 3% average on those, some are higher and some are lower, but when we talk to the accountants, the best, or the auditors, the best way to do this is just as Ty talked about, somewhere in that 3% to 3.25%, so it's just roughly what we're getting on our accounts. And it's basically that transfer, it's just a transfer transaction because we are transferring it to their accounts and then transferring back.
I guess the question is 3% then is the dollar amount? We're not going to be changing based upon T-bills or whatever?
No, that'd be something we'd say on a yearly basis at this request meeting. The next year, you can maybe look at what interest rates are doing. It might be a different rate, but that's kind of going off of what our average is today.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
So if I remember correctly, at our last meeting, we were told that the airport gets money basically in the spring and in the fall when the taxes are paid. Is that correct?
Generally, there is some that comes in periodically, but it's a relatively small amount. You remember the graph at the...
Graph's in your packet.
Yeah.
Well, how do we regulate the amount of money that we give them? It's not going to be a set amount each month. It doesn't seem to me like, is it?
We would take their budget request for the whole year and divide that by the 12 months and give them a 12th every month.
So would we receive the tax money that they receive from the county, and then we would disperse that to them?
They would get the tax money and then disperse that back to us as payments throughout the year.
So instead of their, the airport's revenue stream looking like this throughout the year, they would get a steady amount every month from the city, then as the airport's revenue streams come in, they would just pay back to the city what they receive. That's the idea, because what's happening now, as I said, is the airport's having to go and gain credit from a bank, and so they're paying whatever the commercial interest rate is or something near that. This is a way to reduce that interest amount. They're paying, thus paying the tax, or saving the taxpayers.
It seems like, but, I mean, we're paying ourselves interest essentially is what we're doing. It would seem to me like maybe it would be a better plan to just pay for our expenses and not charge any fixed interest rate on it.
Our auditors suggested that we should charge basically the same rate as what we're receiving on our accounts, which is at 2.9 to 3.25%. That was what they said too.
Yeah, just a reimbursement. We're not making money, we're getting real. We had the money, put it, you get around to 3%, so frankly, it's not a new charge. It's something reflects what we would get if the money stayed in the...
Thanks, Jim.
All right. Other questions, comments? Just to be clear, what's being proposed here is that we would now actually begin working out what this agreement is, and then the agreement would come back to city council for approval at the next meeting or possibly the meeting after.
What I intended with my motion was that it was a 3% per annum, some typical interest calculation, only if they're in a borrowed position. If we're transferring them money that collected on their behalf, I don't say, my only concern, frankly, I wish we didn't really have to charge them, but I think for it to be, if it's determined to be kind of a loan transaction, then you need to do it that way.
That was my suggestion from the auditors.
That was kind of what my thinking was on that.
Any other comments or questions? Calling the question on item number 2, please. Item number 2 is passed. Item number 3. Adopt the resolution recommending the inclusion of the North Platte Regional Airport within the boundaries of the Nebraska International Port of the Plains.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the resolution recommending the inclusion of the North Platte Regional Airport within the boundaries of Nebraska International Port of the Plains.
Second.
Motion by Reeker, second by Vols. You all have this map, I believe, in front of you. It looks like this. Picture of our airport, and this is the area inside, the kind of orange-colored triangle there is the area that's being discussed in terms of the area that could potentially be included in the Port of the Plains at some point in the future. We have Commissioner Brunz here, as well as Commissioner Willer, and would one of you like to, maybe Chris or whichever, she's pointing at Chris, okay? Fill us in on what we're discussing here, from what this looks like in the future perspective to where we are today, please.
Absolutely. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Lincoln County Commissioner Chris Brunz. I represent part of Northwest North Platte and virtually all of Northwest Lincoln County. So this conversation started several months ago between members of the North Platte Airport Authority Board, as well as members of the Inland Port Authority Board of Directors, on how we could include the fantastic asset that is the North Platte Regional Airport into the mix of what is going on with the new budding inland port district out between North Platte and Hershey, west of Bailey Yard. The Municipal Inland Port Authority Act that was passed several years ago was amended just a couple of years ago, and there was a small group of individuals here locally, and we worked on an amendment that allowed some non-contiguous area of a port district to be incorporated into the main port district up to 15 miles away, and that verbiage was pretty specific because we had in mind the potential down the road for including part of the airport here in North Platte into the mix of what is going to be a fantastic operation, in my opinion, for Lincoln County and the entire region for economic growth. So, request was made to both Commissioner Hughley and myself, who sit as liaisons to the Inland Port Authority Board of Directors, on what would that process look like? And Commissioner Hughley and I both agreed that before we ever bring that to our full board, what we would want to see is that there's some cohesiveness amongst all the stakeholders, that this is a desire for future expansion of the port district, and those stakeholders include the Port Authority Board of Directors themselves, the North Platte Airport Authority, as well as, because it falls within the jurisdictional boundaries of the City of North Platte, we would want the City of North Platte to weigh in on this topic as well. And so both the North Platte Airport Authority and the Inland Port Authority have both already taken steps and formally passed resolutions, seeking or recommending that the county seek inclusion of a certain area within the airport boundaries into the overall port district. And this resolution that is before you is merely the formal ask for the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners to entertain this and really dive deep into what does this look like formally. From my perspective, and I can't speak for all the other four colleagues that I serve on the board with, there are certain things that I would want to see after we receive these resolutions or these letters. I would want to see what does an operating agreement look like between the North Platte Airport Authority and the Inland Port Authority as far as jurisdiction, over what aspects of a potential operation, who owns the land? I would, my personal recommendation would be that the Airport Authority maintains ownership of the land, just within that footprint. But there's a lot of different things that need to go into consideration. But there's a lot of different things that need to to go into consideration. The county surveyor would then need to do an actual meets and bounds survey and find out exactly what area, what part of the parcels that make up the airport would be included in that read in that district designation. And then we got to check with the Nebraska Department of Economic Development and just make sure that we're taking steps that are within the confines of state statute and the authority granted to the county board to to expand the district. So with that, I know that there's members from the Airport Authority here that can speak more directly to what parcel they are thinking of and why they are asking for this area to be included within the port district. So I welcome them up, but if anybody has any questions of me, I can answer that now, or you can absolutely reserve to call me back up.
Any questions for Ogohead?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chris, what what do you anticipate taking place in this triangle?
So really, there's a lot of different things that could occur there. Primarily, it would be the thought process, kind of the overall strategic vision is incorporating air cargo, commercial air cargo into the mix of of the transportation nexus that is the the inland port. Currently, we have trucking potential and we have rail potential. Air cargo is the next piece of the puzzle that I think fits our geographic area here in West Central Nebraska pretty well, and it's the fastest growing area in the aviation industry. Speaking from experience. So I think that there's a variety of different entities that you could see come in and potentially build air cargo warehouses where freight would come in on cargo airliners and and then be offloaded into trucks and potentially make its way into the main district or head out onto the the interstate system. So
So you 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 foresee that activity then would be confined within this triangular piece of land?
That's what I would envision, but I think that the Airport Authority would have greater understanding of what they want to see happen within the the boundaries of the airport.
Other question? Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
I'm just curious. If we approve this the way it is and in the future we determine that maybe we should have had, we should have included a little more area, maybe closer to where the hangars are or someplace else. How how hard is it to amend this?
It would be the exact same process that we're going through right now. State statute has afforded the county board to be able to expand or even shrink port districts as they see fit. And obviously, we would not do that without input from relevant stakeholders.
So you're you're saying it would be a relatively easy process?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. We deserve the right to call you back.
Thank you.
Mr. Phelps is the president of the Airport Authority. Would you like to add anything? Or you can both come up. That'll work.
All right. Dan Phelps, North Platte Airport Authority, Residence One zero zero eight Teal Court. I think Commissioner Brunz really summarized everything. Just to give you a little bit more background, we go back to February when we kind of started this process from the airport's perspective. Conversation with Commissioner Brunz and the chamber on how can we push development a little harder at the airport? We've always been open for business out there. Welcome to any businesses that are in need of a runway, any type of aviation business, but how could we really get this going? And this was kind of the next logical step. On our part, we hired a firm HDR engineering out of Omaha to come in and study the area. Being right at the confluence of both of our rivers presents flooding concerns on the east end of town. We are at the very, very east end of town. Once we concluded that study, just like the rest of the east part of town, it concluded it is a buildable site. Phil would be required depending on what we wanted to build, but it is a good site to build. Couple reasons for the area, the triangle section that you're looking at there. So if you're standing in the terminal looking to the south, if you're waiting for an airplane to come in, that area is probably the most logical area for this type of development because of close proximity to the taxiways that are already established to be the least amount of infrastructure investment right off the bat. City services do come to the edge of the airport and are available at the west end, so it'd be a very easy connection to bring over. Also, close proximity to adding roadways in from Highway thirty, depending on what folks needed. It was also very desirable for this site. Within that triangle, there's eighty-four total acres. We do have the ability to expand up to another forty-one acres if if that would be needed. So at your point, we could expand that very easily. The focus, like Chris said, would be an aviation based business. Air cargo would be would be great. You know, we we really don't want to give that land if something doesn't need air and then down the road, somebody comes in and says, oh, shoot, we need it. We needed that. So air cargo is is a good one. Really, anything in aviation, there's lots of different types of businesses out there that that do different things, maintenance, avionics, things like that that would like an airport. One of the biggest things for for pushing to get this completed, you know, and recruiting a tenant is being shovel ready. This is just another tool in our arsenal to say that, hey, if you if you guys need customs clearing, we have the inland port. We're already set up and we're ready to go. We're not really looking at a if you build it, they will come type of scenario more. We we want to be ready for when that that prospect comes in and and we have everything in place and are ready to go. So we really look at this as a joint venture with with all of you, the county, the chamber, airport and inland port, really. So it's going to be a lot of a lot of things to get figured out. This really hasn't been done in Nebraska yet. There's no inland port that's pulled an airport in yet. We'll be the first one. It has been done around the country in different areas. It's been very successful. I was recently in Huntsville, Alabama, and they they've done that there and have been very successful with their air cargo. So that's really what we're we're shooting for and we're excited about the possibilities.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Phelps? Ed?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So if if this becomes successful, and I hope it does, do you foresee in the future that this could be maybe a warehouse hub for like a FedEx or somebody else that could bring planes in and out and put it onto their trucks and distribute to the area?
Yep, absolutely. And in fact, we you know, we get feelers from folks like FedEx, DHL, Amazon, you know, they they have requests for information about our airport on a fairly regular basis. So they they're always looking for that next area. We currently have FedEx cargo that comes in now. They just have a ramp service where they unload the trucks right there. So does UPS. They use Key Lime Air. So, yeah, absolutely. We're we're looking for that that next step. And again, to Chris's point, where we sit with transportation on Highway three, the interstate rail, we're a prime spot.
And add, you know, we do have an eight thousand foot runway, which is kind of like being next to the interstate. A lot of your other airports in Nebraska don't have the resources we do, and this is just able to utilize what we have available.
This is exciting.
Other questions or comments?
Hi, go ahead. I get to speak with Mr. Phelps earlier today, but I just wanted to share some of that with the council. I had some some down the road questions of things like how does zoning jurisdiction work or how to as a redevelopment agreement, who has the authority to do what if you issue a revenue bond or different different things like that, or who can grant a lease, those types of things. And I think that just ties back to what Commissioner Brunz and what what Dan and I spoke about earlier is that there there's you're going to have, you know, four four entities involved here. And so working proactively to get all this figured out, at least, I mean, I imagine that'll be a living, breathing document that'll go on into the future as different situations arise. But getting ourselves prepared on this in a collaborative way is going to be important because I I'm very excited about this. I think having this park in a shovel ready and state and having all this set up, that's what people are looking for. If I'm up in Seattle at Amazon and I want to drop cargo in North Platte, Nebraska, I probably don't want to have to get four entities in North Platte to figure out how to work together. I kind of want them to have that all figured out. So I'm a big supporter of let's move forward with this step and work together.
So you're saying we should have a plan? Is that what you're saying?
We need a plan. Yeah, yeah. I I think this will be one of those agreements that, you know, it's going to be five, six pages, maybe ten out of the gate, and then twenty years from now, it'll be twenty, but it'll it'll continue to refine itself for the good of the situation, I think. And I think it's just important we all work together to to attract those tenants because he's right. We have one of the best runway infrastructures around for our side of the community. It's a great place, especially where, you know, we're that direct north shot, north, south shot from major population areas in Texas and and up in Canada, and we forget that sometimes.
Other questions or comments? Thank you, gentlemen. Anything else? Anyone on this one? Okay, calling the question on item number three, please. Item number three is passed. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate you being here. You're welcome to stay as long as you'd like. Item number four, first reading in action on ordinance number four two one eight to amend statute ninety dot zero nine of the code of the city of North Platte relating to animals in public parks. Lane, the ordinance, please.
Ordinance number forty two eighteen. An ordinance of the city of North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska, to amend the code of the city of North Platte by revising section ninety point oh nine entitled Control of Animals in Public Parks in Chapter Ninety, Animals within Title Nine, General Regulations, to provide that this ordinance shall be made a part of the code of the city of North Platte, Nebraska, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and providing for the effective date and publication thereof.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the ordinance number forty two eighteen to amend ninety point nine ninety point zero nine code of the city of North Platte.
Second. Motion by Rieker, second by Vols. Bill, I asked you to create this, so could you quickly talk through what we're talking about here?
Yes, this this all came about as part of the improvements made to the tennis and pickleball. Well, the improvements made to the tennis courts at Memorial Park, sorry, Cody Park. And then the addition of the pickleball courts at Cody Park. And I think there's also some discussion about making some improvements to the courts at Memorial Park. So that's why we've included that park in this ordinance as well. But based upon a review of city ordinances, we really didn't have anything that applied directly to the tennis and pickleball courts other than animals needing to be on a leash within the city's parks. And so based on manufacturers' recommendations with the coating that was placed on these courts, manufacturer had indicated that the, you know, animals clause and and whatnot can really break down and and cause a lot of damage to that coating. And so recommendation was made from the manufacturer that we not allow animals on the courts and based upon our review, I felt like this was the best approach to be able to incorporate that into the city ordinances. So we've included it within the provision here. What's being proposed is that we just add a subsection into the existing ordinance that says that animals have to be on leashes. So that way law enforcement has the ability to enforce this. They could cite somebody that was violating this ordinance once it would be passed and they would be subject to a fine.
Thank you. Also, this came about because in part because there had been a local dog training entity who had used the old tennis courts from time to time to train dogs on as well as their owners. And so not wanting to leave them without a home, Lane, would you talk about our potential solution there?
So the material's been ordered and at Chris Park, if you know, wire off Buffalo Bill, we're going to create a dog or an animal training area that will encompass part of the half court basketball court that is there as well as a grass area and be all fenced in so they can do training in that area. Much like they have a space now, it'll just be at a different location.
Okay.
Go ahead, Dan. Yeah, these courts are in fantastic shape. We've got a significant investment for them. I kind of contemplated whether we should add on this that the pickleball and tennis players couldn't play tennis and pickleball in the dog parks, but instead of that, I would motion that we would waive the three reading requirement on this.
Second. Did you second that, Brian? Okay. Motion by Lucas, second by Flanders to waive the three readings on this item. Any discussion on waiving the three readings? Seeing done, calling the question and waiving the three readings. Mr. Rieker, I think you missed. Oh, there we go. Okay. Three readings are waived. Back to the original question. Any further discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So are are these currently fenced?
The tennis and pickleball courts? Correct. Yes, they are.
Been out there, but I didn't pay any attention whether they were fenced or not.
Yes.
So how are we going to regulate access onto and off the courts? And my current, my concern really is is not so much the dogs. Cats, I guess, but thinking more about the deer. They don't read signs very well. So I'm wondering how are we going to keep the deer? I would think that the deer's house would be a lot more detrimental to this coding, maybe even a dog, depending on what a dog's doing.
Well, the tennis court fences are
They're a good ten feet. They're tall.
They're pretty tall.
Deer couldn't jump.
And there are there are gates to enter this area, so you'd have to pass through a gate.
So we're going to rely on the players to make sure that they close the gates when they're done?
Yeah. Now, the pickleball courts, I've I've chased deer that'll jump high enough to get into those 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 pickleball courts. So it it could happen, but I guess we'll, if we start seeing deer tracks on them, is Lyle, Lyle, have we had deer on the tennis courts in the? Well, it would have been too tall. Okay. Okay, okay. But should it happen, you know, we might have to look at increasing the height of the fences and the pickleball or something like that.
I know I've I've seen deer where I live, not frequently, but occasionally. And I I guess I'm wondering would it be wise to put some type of a self closing mechanism on the gate so that when somebody goes in, it automatically closes?
It's not a bad idea. We can look at that.
Thank you.
I'd also be happy to pursue fines to the greatest extent allowable by law against those deer.
I don't want to have you repeat that.
I'll I'll pursue fines against any deer we find out.
Death penalty. Let's let's get back before this gets off. All right. Any other serious questions or comments on item number four as amended? Okay, seeing done, calling the question on item number four as amended. We passed in one reading. Item number four is passed as amended. Item number five, second reading in action on ordinance number four two one five to create paving district number eight four three on Bryan Avenue from the intersection of Francis Street fence heading south on Bryan Avenue approximately two hundred and sixty seven feet. Lane, the ordinance, please.
Ordinance number forty two fifteen, an ordinance for the creation of paving district number eight forty three on Bryan Avenue from the intersection of Francis Street, then heading south on Bryan Avenue approximately two hundred and sixty seven feet in the city of North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska, and ordering the construction of street improvements therein.
Thank you. Before anyone motions, if you would be willing to discuss waiving the third reading as this is the second reading on this item in order to try to meet construction timelines, it would be helpful, although not in emergency if not. Or it can just make a motion and we can have another motion too. That's fine, whichever, whatever you prefer.
Mr. Mayor, I move to waive the third reading and adopt ordinance number forty two fifteen to create a paving district, paving extension district number eight four three as presented in the council materials.
Second. Motion by Rieker, second by Vols. Thank you, Ed. Any discussion on this item? This is the little piece of Francis, or excuse me, of Bryan Street that would extend south of Francis near the building or the housing that the homeless shelter group is planning to build here, starting this fall or next spring. Questions or comments? Seeing done, calling the question on item number five, please. Item number five is passed. Item number six. First reading in action on ordinance number four two one seven to create sanitary sewer connection district number twenty-three and eight inch PVC sanitary sewer located east of Buffalo Bill Avenue, starting north of Spring Road, then south along the West Alley of Valley Drive to State Farm Road, approximately fifteen hundred seventy-five feet. Lane, the ordinance, please.
Ordinance number forty two seventeen, an ordinance creating sanitary sewer connection district number twenty-three within and without the corporate limits of the city of North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska, establishing the establishing the outer boundaries of the districts, designating the size, location, and terminal points, and referring to plans and specifications and estimates of the city engineer in connection therewith on file with the city clerk.
Thank you.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number four-two-one-seven to create sanitary sewer connection district number twenty-three as presented in council materials on first reading.
Second. Motion by Flanders, second by Dai. Thank you. Brent, where's Brent? Brent, would you give us a few minutes on what we're talking about here, please?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. What's before you is, has been read. It's a sewer connection district. And where this is located is just east of Pals, which will connect to a major sewer trunk line and go south. And it'd be going behind the boat shop that was talked about prior. So that sewer line would serve that and it would go all the way down to State Farm. And this is set up as a connection district, so there's only a charge when someone connects to it. It's not an extension where you get charged right away. So this will be a connection district that will be based on front footage and when anybody chooses to connect.
So Brent, is it positioned such that the neighbors along the housing division out there, if they chose at some point in the future, they could opt to connect to it?
Correct. It'll be located right in between the two properties. So the houses to the east could connect and the properties to the west, which could develop, could connect to it as well.
Thank you. Other questions? Ty, go ahead.
I just need to request to abstain from this. I've got the potential for a conflict of interest due to my employer.
Thank you. Other, Ed, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. So Brent, there's some other houses, I believe, onto the east. There are two. If those folks wanted to connect into the city sewer, then we'd have to bring another line south to accommodate their requests?
The sewer that runs east and west through there, there's plans with, where the manholes were located originally are set up to run to the south from those for additional development to the east.
Okay, so, presume they've already talked this through. But if that property on the south side of State Farm Road changes hands and that's developed, will this sewer line that we're putting in have enough capacity to handle housing on the south side of State Farm Road?
The, are you talking the one just east of Buffalo, that large open parcel, or further south?
No, right, right directly across the road south of State Farm.
That's owned by MPPD right now, so I don't know what their thoughts are with developing on it. But to your question on the sewer line, the one that goes in front of Pals is the larger sewer. That's the one we'd probably extend further south. This one is probably going to terminate at State Farm.
Okay, all right, thank you.
But the one west would be the larger one. We'd extend further south.
Thanks, Ed. Other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Brent. Seeing done, calling the question on item number six. Item number six is passed. Item number seven. Third reading in action to adopt ordinance number four-two-zero-three to amend the city of North Platte code of ordinances section one-five-six-two-three-six and one-five-six dot two-three-seven, changing sexually oriented businesses from a permitted use in an I-one light industrial district to a conditional use in an I-one light industrial district. Lane, the ordinance, please.
Ordinance number forty-two oh-three, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska, amending chapter one-fifty-six zoning section one-fifty-six dot two-three-six, permitted uses in section one-fifty-six dot two-three-seven, conditional uses, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for the effective date and publication thereof.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number four-two oh-three to amend the city of North Platte code of ordinances section one-five-six point two-three-six and section one-five-six point two-three-seven, changing sexually oriented businesses from a permitted use in an I-one light industrial district to a conditional use in an I-one light industrial district, district, on final reading.
Second. Motion by Lucas, second by Vols. Any discussion on this item tonight? Seeing done, calling the question on item number seven, please. Item number seven is passed. Item number eight. First in a series of three public hearings tonight, the first one is public hearing on the subject of potentially approving the agreement for sale of real estate with Matthew Soboleski of property located at sixteen-twenty-one West Thirteenth Street and to authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents. So we're going to open a public hearing on this item and it would be to potentially sale of real estate on sixteen-twenty-one West Thirteenth Street.
Just a quick point of clarification. After speaking with Councilman McNew, I think we, we determined that that's actually a typo, maybe in the agenda, is that it should be sixteen-nineteen West Thirteenth Street, because this would be next to the property at sixteen-twenty-one West Thirteenth.
Okay. Well, we wouldn't want to purchase the wrong property, so that would be, okay, thank you. Sixteen-nineteen rather than sixteen-twenty-one. Okay. Anyone would like to speak on this subject, please put the microphone, tell us who you are, where you live. We'll be happy to hear your comments on item number eight.
I move we close public hearing.
Second. Guys must have been in choir. I couldn't tell who got that one. Give it to Rod, so. Motion by Vols, second by Rod to close public hearing. Calling the question and closing the public hearing, please. Public hearing is now closed. Thank you. Council will consider approve the agreement for sale of real estate with Matthew Soboleski, am I pronouncing that correctly? Thank you, for property located at sixteen-nineteen West Thirteenth Street and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents.
Mayor, I move to approve the agreement for sale of real estate with Matthew Soboleski and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents.
Second. Motion by Flanders, second by McNew.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Are we getting the house and the lot next to it, or just the house? Because those lots, there is two lots there.
Go ahead, yeah.
So we've actually already purchased the property with the house on it at sixteen-twenty-one.
So we're getting the vacant lot next door?
Yes. So what happened was, we thought initially, all of the, the county assessor's records all showed all of the property being owned by Mr. Stephen Vargas. And so, we had entered into a purchase agreement with him. We thought we were purchasing all of it at that time. But when we got to the title company and they started going through everything, they determined that the lot next door had been sold by the county through a tax sale. And so, we tracked Mr. Soboleski down. He was having trouble doing anything with the property. And so, he said he just wanted to be rid of it. And so, I told him with this program that the city could purchase it and turn it back into usable housing. And he, he was all, all in favor of that.
Okay. So the picture we see is the house, but we're actually voting on the lot? Or we've already bought the lot and we're buying the house?
We've already bought the house. We would be buying the lot next door. So, yes, so the picture, I just included that because that's the best photo that we have to show. It's, the lot itself is kind of on the right-hand side of the house.
Anything else, Rod? Okay, other, Nick, go ahead.
Can you guys remind me how much we paid for sixteen-twenty-one, the one with the house on it?
Yes, if you give me one second, I can.
And then this is for both lots next to it, not just the one, right?
Correct. So, the way that the, the GIS system shows it's split up into two separate parcels. One parcel says the west half of Lot Eight, the other parcel says the east half of Lot Eight. So, the proposed agreement that is on this, in the part of the city council's agenda items there is actually, it's all of Lot Eight. So it would be both of those assessors' items. So, one second here and I'll have that pulled up.
Is the city wanting to keep the lots separate or make them all into one?
I believe the plan is to combine it to turn it into a more normal-sized lot.
Gotcha.
Okay. Sorry, Ed. Got a lot of purchase agreements in this particular file. Okay, I think I... Okay, so with Mr. Vargas, the purchase agreement was for... It was for the assessed value of the house, which was nine thousand seven hundred and forty-two dollars.
Okay.
And so, the purchase agreement with Mr. Soboleski is for five thousand, which is slightly below what the assessed value for the full Lot Eight would be.
So all in all, it would be fourteen thousand for this whole area that the city's trying to buy?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Mr. Mayor. Go ahead.
Just make a few comments. Because of other items of discussion, I've had a number of phone calls about the city purchasing property. And I know that's been a, a topic here. And, and I know people don't watch all of our meetings or always read the, the news medias or whatnot. But I just want to reemphasize, the city has a very disciplined approach at trying to find properties that are stuck, that are economically unfeasible for people to buy. It, we have people that go through our town and they look for tall grass, they look for dilapidated homes, and they figure out who owns them and they try to purchase them, they fix them up, they sell them, they rent them. There's a lot of people in this community that do that business. They can come to the city and the city will give them a list of the properties that are on our property resolution team list. They can go call the owners of these. And then all of a sudden, when the city finally tracks down who owns them and tries to help solve a problem, well, then all of a sudden, people are concerned about the city spending money on these houses. Well, our local investors have had a lot of time. The city's opened up their resources to try to connect property owners and the ones they're purchasing. I think this one's a very good example. If you take the purchase price of this and you add what demolition costs would be for it, that's going to exceed what the market value of that, that lot is. And so, again, the idea is that we were able to find some state money to help support this program to where the city can basically acquire these properties, lose money probably, probably in most cases in doing it, but then be able to create these as, as public sales or whatever sales process this council decides when the time's right, where these properties can get sold back out to people that are investing. So I think there's a lot of misconceptions about what's going on here. And I appreciate that we have a public hearing tonight on this too. So anybody that has concerns has every opportunity to come and, come and voice them. But there's, there's a lot of bad mojo on this in the community and I think there's a lot of misunderstood information and a lot of mistaken facts out there about it. Thank you for letting me state that.
Okay. I, also to, in the spirit of keeping people informed on what's going on here, we, we, the city have been working on a, in addition to our website, that actually shows the pictures of the insides of many of these houses and why they're not readily repairable and things like that. And it's, it's not quite ready for prime time, but it will be here in the next week or so. And so, there'll be an announcement about it. If you look at some of the pictures of the inside of the house, you can understand why no, no one invested in it. There's, there's one of them in there that... We don't think anyone's probably lived in it for a decade or more, just by the look of it. So, anyway, more to come on that. Other questions or comments? Okay. Seeing done, calling the question on item number eight, please. Item number eight is passed. Item number nine, another public hearing. Do consider action on an application by Todd McKeeman for a conditional use permit to allow construction of a seasonal cabin to be located at twelve-twenty-eight Hilltop Circle in an R-dash-L suburban residential district. Slide number nine, I'm officially opening the public hearing. Anyone would like to make a comment on this? Yes, ma'am, hold on. Please approach the microphone and tell us what your name is and where you live, please.
Good evening, I'm Joan Steele. I live at twelve-nineteen Hilltop Circle. I am one of the direct access neighbors to Doc, to Todd McKeem. I don't know him. I don't know if he's here. But I object to this because this is a very nice residential area. It wasn't, that wasn't the intended use of the lot. There's been, it looks like we're developing a junkyard back there. I, I object to it being used and in that, for that purpose. I don't approve it, but... Thank you.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Would anyone else like to speak on this issue? If so, please approach the microphone. Let us know your thoughts. I usually wait about ten seconds to see if anyone moves. So, is there anyone in the hallway, Judy? Other than, okay.
I move we close public hearing.
Second. Motion by Vols, second by Rieker. Calling the question on closing the public hearing. Todd, you missed.
Sorry.
Okay. Public hearing is now closed. Council will now consider action on application by Todd McKeeman for a conditional use permit to allow construction of a seasonal cabin to be located twelve-twenty-eight Hilltop Circle in an RL suburban residential district. Someone would need to make a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I move that we find the request for conditional use permit to allow seasonal cabin to be located at twelve-twenty-eight Hilltop Circle meets the minimum standards stated in the North Platte's code of ordinances, section one-five-six point three-two-two, and approve and grant the conditional use permit requested with the condition that all elements of the application are complied with based on the following factual findings. The U shall conform to all applicable ordinances, laws, and regulations for any governmental jurisdiction. The U shall have adequate water, sewer, and drainage facilities. Ingress and egress shall be so designated as to minimize traffic congestion in the public streets. The U shall, in all other respects, conform to the applicable regulations of the district in which it's located and the U shall be in harmony with the character of the area and the most appropriate use of the land.
Second. Motion by Vols, second by Dai. Comments?
Pete?
So, I went up to the area where Mrs. Steele was talking about and I have a lot of concern about this. Again, it is a very, very nice residential area with direct line of sight with about five or six houses back there. I drove back down a path that is an easement for a road. So, if you guys can picture this, you come up where TP and Apache, I think it is, kind of merge. There's a little path going down and this, this whole development is supposed to circle around and connect on to Hilltop Circle, which are gorgeous, gorgeous homes down there. So I go down this little path, I hit some trees and you're... I see a couple cars sitting back there. I see... I see a couple cars sitting back there, I see some lawn mowers, I took pictures. Uh, five or six trailers, just kinda, it's just kinda looking junky back there. Okay? These are big lots and they're very, very pristine lots, very nice lots. I, I, especially with the, the applicant not being here, I really don't know what the use of this. Five hundred foot cabin, for lack of better terms, getaway is there, he, he lives two doors down. Um, in this area, so I, I don't know what the purpose is. I can see it, there's no water, there's no sewer, there's no utilities back there. So you talk about the U shall be in harmony with the character of the area. I don't think a cabin is within the harmony of the intended area of this development. The U shall have adequate water, sewer and drainage facilities. Define adequate. I, I don't know that this fits the mold for this and. I just, I don't feel comfortable with what's going on here without, especially without the applicant being here to tell me what his intended use of this property is, so. I'm gonna find myself, I, I have a negative connotation on this, I've talked to a few of the neighbors in the area. And they have problems with it, so I'm not really inclined to, to vote in favor of this, so that's my piece on this.
Other comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Hi. Yeah, I also went up to the property because I was contacted by a few property owners, I usually try to go look at them anyway, this is a really unique piece of property because. It was all subdivided, the roads in, if you look on GIS, you'll see the road, but the road was never finished, but there's actually multiple building lots. I think the Steels, for example, in addition to their house, have a couple of building lots. And then there's this bigger, this bigger lot. And if the, you could, you could put a gravel driveway or something in there and have what looked to me to be multiple building lots, so. Big concern I've got here is that it's not our job to worry about covenants on subdivisions in the county, but I recall that Indian Hills had covenants originally that. For something like this, I don't know, I don't think they have an active HOA in today's world, but back in the day, there was a covenant set that prevented things like this in that area. And second, you have all of these homes around it, it, I mean, if this doesn't have a bathroom, I mean. Not trying to be too illustrative here, but there's multiple, there's five or six homes that kind of sit up above this lot. And it just doesn't seem like a good situation, I mean. I don't, I agree with the, it's hard with the applicant not being here to answer these questions, because my question to them would been. Why do you need this versus just building a house? Because you can build a house of a pretty small square footage up there. You just have to, to have the things that a house has, like a bathroom, and so, so that's, that's, that's why I'm also inclined to vote against this as well.
Other questions or comments? Anybody else on the council? Okay, Mrs. Steele. Keep it under a minute if possible.
Under one minute, we purchased the remaining lots in the area to prevent that area from being accessed, we like it to be a natural area.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, calling the question on item number nine, please. Item number nine fails, does not pass. Okay, moving on to item number ten. Yes, sir.
I received an email about two hours ago. City attorney. He says I don't have a conflict of interest, but there is an appearance of a conflict of interest. And I don't have enough time to go get an official opinion on this, so apparently I will be abstaining on this one, so.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, can I follow that as well?
Go ahead. I've examined from my attorney, uh, I'm sorry, from my employer. We have a business relationship with the applicant on this, and I also, as Mr. Fudge's comments said earlier, talked to the NADC about it. Yesterday and they got back to me today, and so I also have the potential for conflict of interest and asked to abstain as well.
Okay. So this is a public hearing. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, um, I move that we table this public hearing and for the next meeting in two weeks. Just because of the fact that followed a special planning commission meeting, just to give public and everybody more time and preparation and everything like that.
Second.
Hold on just a second. We have a motion by McNue and a second by Reeker to table the public hearing. Calling the question on the motion to table the public hearing.
Why you get paid the big bucks?
Unless I.
And it raises the question of whether you have the ability to. Vote under the circumstances.
Okay.
Let me, I can read the provisions of the statute. You should probably exit since the other person abstaining exited, so. Well. My opinion would be that the statute that governs when the mayor may vote. Circumstances like this only applies to votes concerning ordinances, resolutions or orders for the appropriation or payment of money, which. This is not one of those, and so I would say that the motion to table does not pass.
Okay. Because I can't vote primarily.
You cannot vote, but it's a tie vote, so it.
So the motion fails.
It fails.
Okay, so the motion fails, Nick.
Yeah.
Okay. So we will continue with the public hearing. Do consider action on application by Trucks and Tiara's Intergenerational Academy for a conditional use permit to allow a daycare center to be located at. Four nine one dash four nine five West State Farm Road in an A dash one transitional agricultural district. So we're opening the public hearing. And as soon as Judy is done telling us what, what's going on here with the particulars of the legalities, then I'll invite people to come up and we'll go from there.
Judy Clark, Director of Planning and Development, and all I wanted to do was just let you know what the recommendation was from the Planning Commission. We just had the Planning Commission meeting and they forwarded a positive recommendation, which was unanimous recommendation in favor of allowing the conditional use. If you have any additional questions, I'm happy to answer those.
We reserve the right to call you back in the future. Okay, public hearing is open, looks like Mr. Purdy is approaching the microphone, so you are up first, Ryan.
Thank you, and good evening, Kansas City Council members, my name is Ryan Purdy, I'm the president of Mid Plains Community College, I reside at three, three, four West Weaver Heights, just north of town. I'm obviously six oh one State Farm is the, the main south campus of Mid Plains Community College. I just wanted to clarify, clarify some assumptions and some misinformation that has been spread regarding the purchase of Osgood. The college had discussed the possibility of early childhood education center on campus for many years and long before I was in my current role. The cost of a suitable facility and the revenue shortfall that was being experienced within the child care center were the major deterrents back then. At MPCC, we continuously look for ways to attract and retrain more local students to stay in our service area and be physically present. We know that nearly ninety percent of our students are from our local service area and about ninety percent of those stay within the eighteen county service area. Programs and activities that promote these opportunities will be, will be considered. When Osgood was listed for auction, its location, size, condition and design fell within the term, the items noted above. We have no intent on soliciting tenants when we bid on the facility. I had talked to a few people regarding our desire to expand our early childhood education offerings, but nothing beyond that. Our intent was to take the next eighteen to twenty-four months to plan for more permanent use of the facility. While watching the population shifts in the area to provide needed workforce skills to fulfill the new jobs that came with these population changes. There was already a tenant in the building and it was noted in the bid documents that the new owner would assume the lease. It was our intent and it was shared that we would work with the tenant and allow them to stay through June thirty, twenty twenty-six with some modifications in the agreement. Trucks and Tiara's was informed of the current tenant and was asked if co-location would provide any conflicts for the Child Development Center and they answered no. Shortly thereafter, the current tenant position changed and they informed us that they would not be honoring their current lease and would not be paying rent, so Mid Plains Community College asked them to vacate the property. The colleges did not solicit Trucks and Tiara's and the first introduction of the parties was on June eleventh, just two days before the college closed on the property. The college had no information regarding the lease status of Trucks and Tiara's at that point. In time, the plan was to leave the vacant, mostly vacant, except for the current tenant while we took the time to plan for the future. New academic programs require extensive planning and research and also require approval of the Nebraska Coordinating Commission for Post-Second Area Education and the Higher Learning Commission accrediting body. New athletic programs require approval from both Region Nine or Competing Region and the National Junior College Athletic Association. The requirements, intents and governing body approvals can take more than a year in most cases. Mid Plains Community College already has an approved early childhood education program and the expansion of that program that utilizes this partnership does not take additional approvals. We have no plans to solicit additional tenants for the space, we are working closely with Trucks and Tiara's on practicum space for our students in our education classes. While the children in the center may not be college aged, the ability of our education students to have the space on campus is a perfect example of why this makes sense for the partial use of the former elementary. School building for the next two years while we plan on its long-term future. The arrangements with Trucks and Tiara's will require the payment of utilities and property taxes assessed on that portion of the building as they are not exempt from property tax. The arrangement is educational, Osgood was built for education and it will continue to be used for education. A vote no for this conditional use permit, a vote yes for the conditional use permit allows Trucks and Tiara's to relocate operations and serve nearly one hundred students in the space. A vote no for this conditional use permit leaves families of nearly one hundred children scrambling to find alternatives of care and leaves Osgood idle for the, for the time being. Thank you for your time and your support of this conditional use permit.
Thank you, we reserve the right to call you back later. Next.
Mayor, Councilman, my name is Colton Van Teicher, I office at one twelve North Dewey, reside at five ten sixteen Street in Gothamburg. So I'm an attorney licensed to practice law in Nebraska, I do need to clarify because of a report this weekend, I, I'm not here serving in any legal capacity, excuse me. For Trucks and Tiara's or Holly Hill, so why am I here? About eight years ago in my community, I got involved in the childcare discussion in Gothamburg. Since that time, I have consulted with dozens of communities across the state of Nebraska and I've spoken on the state and national levels. As it relates to the importance of providing access to high quality, affordable, early childhood education. The significant capacity issues that we face in our rural communities and especially in Nebraska. And the downstream economic impacts to these communities where we do not address those capacity needs. So when I talk about capacity, let's look at North Platte. The Nebraska Children and Families Foundation through their Communities for Kids Initiative takes your census data and can identify the number of kids in your community. Under the age of six who have all available parents working, those are kids that likely will need childcare. In North Platte, that number is one thousand ninety-nine. Your current licensed childcare spots between public and private entities amounts to eight hundred and eleven. Now I say licensed because those are the only permitted child cares to operate in the state of Nebraska. Unlicensed child cares would be operating outside of the Nebraska state law. So with that eight hundred and eleven licensed spots and your one thousand ninety-nine kids that need care, we have what we call a gap. Two hundred and eighty-eight kids in the community that don't have access to childcare. So how does that relate to this application? Trucks and Tiara's on May twelfth was notified by their current landlord that they were going to be terminating the lease, to no fault Trucks and Tiara's. Notably that May twelfth is after the date of the auction, so that, that echoes Mr. Purdy's statement that this did not occur really until after the auction took place. Now Trucks and Tiara's currently serves or has capacity to serve one hundred kids, that's over twelve percent of your current licensed capacity in North Platte. Failure to approve this conditional use permit would result in the loss of over twelve percent of your licensed childcare capacity. But instead Trucks and Tiara's approached the community college and spoke with them to create what, what is a public-private partnership. That people in my field that talk on this subject praise, public-private partnerships to solve a problem of a community. Now, not only will Trucks and Tiara's, if this is approved, be able to continue to serve the one hundred children that they're licensed for, they would be able to increase their capacity to one hundred and eighty. So instead of seeing an over twelve percent decline, you would see a ten percent increase in the licensed capacity spots. That's over a quarter of that two hundred and eighty-eight gap number. This is important. And on top of that, again, this partnership brings about benefits for these kids and for the community college. They have a curriculum that, that educates students in the college for early childhood education programs. A requirement in that curriculum is to earn practicum hours. What better way for those students to earn their practicum hours than to work in a childcare facility on campus? And on the flip side of that, what better opportunity for the young children in our community to learn from individuals who are being educated to be professionals in this field of operation? Secondly, the, the community college certainly serves a student population that has childcare needs. Again, this is a location that they can serve, uh, serve the needs of those individuals in the community college. And finally, when we talk about the need for childcare and the reason why we have lack of capacity issues, it comes down to the fact that the business model is broken. Childcare providers cannot charge families the cost that it takes to provide high quality, early care and education. The community college has been a great partner, they're not looking to receive a high return on investment in, in this, in this property through exorbitant rents. Instead, they've worked with Trucks and Tiara's to identify really what their cost would be to the community college and they're passing that along. That is, again, public-private partnership that ultimately results in us providing a sustainable, long-term solution to the childcare needs of your community. I, I appreciate your time, I am going to turn it over to Holly Hill, the owner of Trucks and Tiara's unless you have questions.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Holly Hill, I'm the owner and director of Trucks and Tiara's Intergenerational Academy. And I currently have some letters, we have some parents that weren't able to make it due to childcare issues. And so they were wanting to know if they could get their copies of the letters to them.
Thank you. Thanks, Holly.
We can share, thank you. We can share with Wayne too, that's.
Do you guys have any questions?
We reserve the right to call you back, but the public hearing phase is for you to talk to us, so if there's anything you'd like to add, please do so. Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
Hi, my name's Val Hyde, I'm a resident at seven twenty-one West Eighth Street. I'm also the early childcare, or the early child, the community coordinator for Communities for Kids, Lincoln County, we're a nonprofit organization dedicated to improving childcare access and quality in Lincoln County. Um, I just want us to reiterate, reiterate some of Colton's data that he shared, just focusing on that capacity number. This data was updated in May of twenty-five from Nebraska Children's and Families, their Communities for Kids. Organization, so currently we sit at two hundred and eighty-eight spots that are, our community still needs for quality education. And I just wanted to reiterate the current numbers we currently have, currently there are fourteen licensed in-home childcare providers. There are eleven licensed childcare centers and then there's three licensed preschool providers. Just really focusing on the licensing aspect and quality care, I hope you really take that into consideration. The zero to eight age group and early childhood is some of the most important time in a child's brain development, so that quality care is really important. Um, and we really support Trucks and Tiara's, they work really hard with programs like Rooted Relationships, Step Up to Quality. Uh, to main, maintain the highest standard of care, um, so I would support them and their conditional use permit. So I would support them and their conditional use permit. That's being discussed here today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Who would like to speak next? Please put your microphone.
Good evening. I'm Julie Peterson. I'm the interim director at the University of Nebraska-Lincoln's West Central Research Extension and Education Center at four oh two West State Farm Road, so directly across the street neighbors from the Osgood Building. We have about fifty full-time, year-round faculty and staff at our center and about thirty seasonal and part-time graduate students, visiting scholars, postdoctoral scholars. When we had the Ladybug Daycare in the Osgood Building, we had a number of our faculty and staff who had their children in care there just right across the street, including graduate students who were living in our student housing that's just there across the street at the university center. So we do see a lot of value of having that access in terms of even recruitment and retention of faculty members at our North Platte Research and Extension Center for UNL and potential future partnerships in educational efforts with Mid Plains. As a private citizen, I'm at fifty-five oh four Southwest Ridgecrest Circle and my two children have been in care at Ladybugs at Osgood and went to Osgood Preschool. And just the extreme value of that and also having experienced when Kids Academy closed and understanding how hard it is to get your children in on daycare and how important that is, we're one of the statistics of two working parents and the challenge of finding quality care is one of the top things for quality of life for us. So thank you.
Thank you. Would like to speak next?
I'm Megan Schroeder, seven oh two Amazon Avenue in Wellfleet. I'm a parent of three children attending Trucks and Tiaras daycare and they've gone there the past five years. My children, as well as myself, will be directly impacted by this decision before you tonight. I'm here to emphasize the importance of the approval of the conditional use permit for Trucks and Tiaras daycare to operate in the old Osgood School Building. It's not merely a zoning consideration. It's a matter of community need and continuity of care. As a working parent, I require the approval of the conditional use permit because access to dependable and secure childcare is vital for me to effectively support my family and fulfill my professional responsibilities. In a region already experiencing a shortage of childcare options, this would place significant strain on families and employers alike. Approving this permit means supporting working families like mine, helping us balance our responsibilities while ensuring our children have a positive and secure place to grow. I respectfully ask that you vote in favor of this permit, ensuring that Osgood continues to serve its community and support working families in a meaningful way. Thank you.
Thank you. Would like to speak next?
Good evening. I'm Pat Jacobson, eight oh five Stewart Avenue. My daughter goes to this daycare and they're not choosing to move. Their lease is ending, so they have to move. If they, if this move is blocked, a hundred kids, including mine and their families, lose cares. Dozens of working parents will be left without the support. This isn't about politics. It's about keeping childcare in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Would like to be next?
Hi there. My name is Bryce Harvey, twenty-six eighteen Pawnee Avenue in North Platte. I run a marketing company in town. I'm twenty-four years old, but on top of all that, I get to be a dad soon. Through the miracle of adoption, I get to adopt a little girl out of foster care in Lincoln County. My daughter has been attending Trucks and Tiaras since she was placed in my care. As a single foster dad on the road to adoption, Holly and the staff at Trucks have been just an incredible source of support as we navigate all of this. Come to find out, parenting didn't come with the playbook. So that's that's fascinating. Trucks and Tiaras' current lease will end on August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five, and they need to move. They have the perfect opportunity to expand into the current Osgood Elementary Building. This move would be a huge win for our community, allowing them to care for more for sixty more children and create new jobs. I'm very grateful for Holly, for North Platte and for all of you gentlemen for sacrificing your time to be here today. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, was your was your first name Bryce?
Yes.
Thank you. Who would like to be next?
Good evening. My name is Antoinette Madden. I reside at four oh two West William Avenue. I advocate for the move for Trucks and Tiaras Intergenerational Academy out to the Osgood Elementary Building. On a personal level, I was raised, homeschooled, anti daycare. It's all indoctrinating you, you know, all that stuff. I came to a very rude awakening in March of this year when I found out that the family that were watching my children were placing them in unsafe situations. I spent that Thursday crying, trying to find a daycare with immediate availability. And it is very hard to find childcare in this town at the moment. I messaged Holly. She was recommended through a Facebook group. I messaged her. I was like, hey, like, do you have any openings? She's like, they fill fast. Why don't you come down? We'll see if Trucks is a good fit for you, if you think it's going to be good for your kids. I am a single working mother of two children. I have a son who's almost four, a daughter who is almost one. I work for the school district. I go back to school Friday the eighth. And at that point, I am providing education to kindergarteners while Ms. Holly is providing education to my toddlers. My son has grown immensely in the six months that he's been at Trucks. He has grown emotionally. He's become more aware empathetically. A more vocal. He was a very quiet, very conscious. He's very vocal. He'll tell me how he's feeling, what's going on with himself. My daughter, who is eighteen months as of today, she talks, she walks, she understands sharing. She talks to her friends. She gives high fives. She laughs with her teachers. My son comes home each day and he says, his main teacher is Mr. Ryan, and he says, Mr. Ryan and I learned a new song. Mr. Ryan showed me that the capital A matches with the lowercase a on the keys. He learns. This is education that they will not receive. If I cannot work with them having childcare, then I cannot put my effort towards the school district, towards this community. I will not have people to care for my children. This is something that in order for me to support my children, it is just me. And in order for me to support them, I need the full-time work. They need the full-time care. Trucks has been amazing with this. Please take this into consideration that they should move out to Osgood Elementary and continue its amazing legacy in this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to be next?
Good evening. My name is Jordan Boston, address forty-three fifteen here in North Platte. I'm a proud North Platte resident, small business owner and a parent of two children that are currently going to be directly impacted by your decision tonight. I'm here to urge you to approve the conditional use permit for Trucks and Tiaras daycare to operate in the old Osgood School Building. This is more than zoning matter. It's a pressing need. If the permit is denied, eighty-five families, one hundred children will lose childcare in this city where it is already difficult and hard to find. The solution is right in front of us. Osgood was built for learning and designed for kids. A yes vote allows Trucks and Tiaras to keep doing what this space was designed for, caring for children, supporting working parents and preventing childcare crisis for dozens of local families. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to be next?
Gary Pearson, President, North Platte Chamber Development Corporation, five oh two South Dewey. Going to state the obvious, as a Chamber of Commerce and a development corporation, we're continuously dealing with existing business community, working with new employers, trying to recruit new companies in North Platte. And anytime you're dealing with the business community, you deal with workforce issues. And so we get thrust into all the housing development issues that this community addresses and certainly childcare is almost as pressing of a need. And the shortage is very real. We need good quality daycare. You've got a great example in this organization that's requesting the initial use permit tonight. And I'm also involved in the One Nebraska Six Regions Coalition. And I can tell you, this issue permeates throughout the state of Nebraska with a childcare shortage and quality childcare in general. We're working on a new five-year strategic plan, just coming off of our last five-year strategic plan where we accomplished ninety-three percent of our goals we set out. And this is a high priority in our next five-year plan is to deal with the childcare issues. It's a community responsibility. We all have to step up to try to find the solutions. And so I believe this is a good solution and a facility that was meant for education. And anybody who's had children in quality childcare at facilities knows that a lot of that early childhood education impacts the rest of their life.
Thank you. Who would like to be next?
Good evening. My name is Taylor Sutton and I reside at nine twenty-one Tomahawk Road in North Platte, Nebraska. And there's no need that there is a need for quality daycare in North Platte. I was at the auction though, and I would like to clarify a couple of things. Sorry here. One moment. So one thing that I read in the media coverage, it did make it sound like that the Garricks were outbid by the college, but there was another private bidder there who outbid the Garricks and
Taylor?
Yes.
We all appreciate your desire for truth, but this is about the zoning, so please keep your comments around this one. Thank you.
Absolutely. Anyways, my question is, will the entity be able to handle the landlord responsibilities in line with landlord-tenant law? Or will it partner with a management company? And what are their plans going to be as far as landlords and looking over the property?
Okay, thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
Hi, Crystal Johnson, eight twenty east six. I am mother of a toddler and both of us work full-time. My son goes to an in-home daycare currently and is not at Trucks and Tiaras. However, I know it's very important to have childcare available. Trucks and Tiaras is on a compressed timeline, so I do appreciate you listening to us tonight in regards to this. They are looking at not only relocating, but actually expanding their program to be able to house more children to help with our deficit in this community. But they also offer things that not every childcare center hand. They have after-school programs, preschool. They offer transportation back and forth to school, which is a main concern once your child gets into kindergarten age, is trying to get off work to go transport them. So they're a major benefit to our community and they really need this property. It's already been a daycare in the past when it was owned by the public schools. So with it being a public community college, this should be the same situation as well that they can house a daycare in this facility.
Thank you. Would like to be next?
Trey Wassberger, thirty-two thirty East Watts Road, North Platte, Nebraska, America, six nine one oh one. I've never had to do this before after all the meetings I've been to, so but I've always wanted to say that. Anyways, guys, I came here not a dog in the fight. Let's just be honest, we've done an incredible thing here in this community and some of you guys were a part of that clear back in twenty twenty. And, you know, with an influx of people coming to town, wanting to work and want to work hard, one of the first things we get asked about, not necessarily in this order either, is housing and childcare. And what are you doing about childcare? What are you doing about housing? And that's that's a tough question. I think that's something a lot of us have spent a lot of time doing and working hard towards and a lot of passion towards it. And this to me is pretty simple. I actually had a mentor tell me this earlier because I'm I'm starting to learn about zoning and regulations and stuff and I'm no expert. Judy can attest to that, but I'm getting smarter every day. And my mentor said, Trey, this is just cowboy logic. If you want to put it in your terms, we're not, we're not talking, I mean, the character of the property and the traffic and the flow and sewage and everything fits the zoning part of it. So this just makes total sense to me. Call it cowboy logic. I think they were just kind of dumbing it down for me, but that really made a lot of sense to me. As a company, as a family and as a as a father and an uncle that have had children in that facility, I think this is a no-brainer for our community. And we chose the hard thing, right? We chose economic growth. We chose opportunity. And this comes with that and making hard decisions with this. This one totally makes sense. It's a beautiful marriage between a a great community college that has big dreams and big plans and something we need to get behind for us as a whole and take care. And I talked about this at the groundbreaking, right? Retaining retaining young talent. It starts there. So I ask that you guys support this hundred percent. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
I move we close public hearing.
Motion by Volz, second by Rieker to close the public hearing. Call in question on closing the public hearing, please. Public hearing is now closed. Thank you, everyone. We do appreciate your comments and you're taking your time to attend to it.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we find the request for a conditional use permit to allow a daycare center to be located at four nine one dash four nine five West State Farm Road in an elementary school building meets the minimum standards stated in the North Platte Code of Ordinance, section one five six point three two two, and approve and grant the conditional use permit requested with the condition that all elements of the application are complied with based on the following factual findings. The U shall conform to all applicable ordinances, laws and regulations of any governmental jurisdiction. The U shall have adequate water, sewer and drainage facilities. Ingress and egress shall be so designated as to minimize traffic congestion congestion in the public streets. The U shall, in all other respects, conform to the applicable regulations of the district in which it is located. And the U shall be in harmony with the character of the area and the most appropriate use of the land. Second.
I'm not sure who got that one, so I'm giving it to Brian. Okay, motion by Volz, second by Flanders. Okay, discussion on item number ten. There was one question by the public regarding a management company. Mr. Purdy, would you like to answer that question officially, please?
Absolutely. We're not soliciting any other tenants. You know, we have two hundred million dollars of property throughout our eighteen kind of service area. It's rolled into our three-year facility plan for windows, infrastructure, whether that be parking lots, roofs, boiler systems. So there's no need for a management company. We're well aware of what it takes to to run a school building.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, as we, as again, we we think about this conditional use permit, we had one last agenda item and I found two areas that I felt it was deficient. We're looking at this for conditional use and it fits to a T, the five categories, and that's why I emphasize them a little bit here. It fits to a T, like it's been said, it's a no-brainer as far as fitting a square peg in a square hole. This fits very well into this area. We just heard testimony, eloquent testimony from everybody who spoke, and I appreciate that very much. And showing the need for a daycare and for added abilities of this daycare. So not only does it fit the conditional use of what we are deciding on, but there's overwhelming public support for this. Everybody's seen a lot of stuff on Bookface and in social media.
Facebook.
Facebook.
Oh, Facebook.
Apparently people from New Jersey call it Bookface.
And in my opinion, that's just a lot of noise and diversion. So let's stick to the facts. Let's stick to the facts of our community. We've built a lot of industry here in this community and we need places for kids to go so that parents can work. So I am strongly in favor of this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Brian?
Well, I have to say that I don't know how we can't vote for this. One, it's a it used to be a school. What better way to use it as a daycare? It's already got, it's got everything. Two, we don't want to put the kids out of and having the parents have to scramble. Two, we don't want to put the kids out of, and having the parents have to scramble to try to find somewhere for them to go. I don't want that. So I'm for this.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Dye?
After hearing everybody talk tonight, I feel your pain. I'm a small business, and when I have an employee come to work in the morning and say, I have a sick child this morning, I can't go to daycare, when you're on a small business, that's tough. If you got a small amount of people, that puts you a man short, person short. We can't afford in the city to have 100 kids not have daycare because it's going to affect our teachers, it's going to affect our restaurants, our businesses. I mean, childcare is hard. I was fortunate, my wife stayed home and took care of ours, but childcare is hard, and it's a hard business to be in. It's hard for the employees. And we have one here that's already gone, it's going into a building that's made for it. I don't know how we can't vote yes for it.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Nick? I have a question for Mr. Purdy, if I may. Is this lease temporary, or is it, what's the, what's the long-term look like?
They initially asked for a five-year. We said no, we said two. I said, we need to go through our planning. We don't, we don't have the building for less than three days, I think, when, when we talked about an agreement. And I said, I can't, I can't commit to five. I committed to two because it's going to take me 18, 24 months to stand up any program we have. Not to say, it couldn't be expanded. If it works out great, it's a win for all. There's no reason we couldn't look to extend it, but right now it's two years, and it has got an end date of June 30, 2027.
Okay, thank you. I have another question for Judy. On the conditional use permits, is, that's a forever thing? There's no term that you can put on that, or expiration date? Once it's in place, it's in place forever, right?
You can add a condition, and you can have it expire if you want to. There's, there's nothing saying that you can't do that. It goes with the land. So if you say it's five years, and Trucks and TRs happen to move out year three, they still are allowed to have a daycare in that facility for the remaining two years. But yeah, there's, there's no reason that you can't put an expiration on it if you would like to.
Okay. Anything else for Judy? Ed, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, Judy, if I understand correctly, the daycare operators are the ones that asked for the conditional use permit, is that correct?
Correct, but the conditional use permits through zoning go with the land. So it does not necessarily matter who the applicant is, as long as the landowner signs the application, which they did. Mid Plains Community College did sign the application, but the applicant was Trucks and TRs. That way, everybody knows what's going on and who's going in now.
Okay, thank you.
Nick? Yeah, thanks. Well, I didn't have any more for you. Sorry, Judy. Thank you. Appreciate it. I, I guess one, one of the things that bothered me about this is the fact of how rushed it felt. And I understand the need of panic and, you know, scrounging for a building and a location. I understand that. I, my, the reason for my motion to table it was to kind of go along with the due process of not immediately following the planning commission, or feel like we're giving special treatment to anybody else. Because if anybody else would have applied, I don't know if we would have sped it up as fast. So I just wanted to kind of slow the process down. I understand for the need and the urgency. At the end of the day, we have to look out for the kids, and that's what it comes down to, right? If this was already zoned, to allow a daycare, we wouldn't even be having this conversation regardless of who bought it. I, I think one of the biggest problems that we have in this town that frequently comes up is commercial business, or commercial real estate in this town. I think there's a, there's a huge need for more commercial spaces in this town, and I encourage the council and the chamber and everybody to look at that and how we can help resolve that issue in the future, especially with, you know, with new people, and the town's going to come new businesses. And I think we're going to continue to have this dilemma of limited retail and commercial space. So at the end of the day, you know, I feel like it was, you know, nobody was questioning when the school had it, and there was a daycare. And like I said, if it was already zoned that way, we wouldn't be having this conversation today. So we got to look out for the kids, and, and we got to look out for the future of the community. So, thank you. Other questions or comments? Seeing done, calling the question on item number 10, please. Item number 10 is passed. Item number 11, approve the claims.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the claims.
Motion by Reeker, second by Nisley. Calling the question on approving the claims, please.
Claims are approved. Public agenda request. We respect our city employees and request that any complaints or criticisms of employees not be aired in a public meeting. Concerns about employees should be brought to the attention of the city administrator or the mayor. Individuals in violation will be declared out of order. If anyone has a public agenda request item, please approach the microphone and tell us what it is.
Mr. Reeker?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn. Second?
Motion by Reeker, second by Vols for adjournment. Calling the question on adjournment, please. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. We'll see you back in two weeks. Okay, council, we have a budget work session on, on the 18th. I guess we'll see you on the 18th.